I'm gonna go ahead and call the September 11th, 2023 Cambridge City Town Council meeting to order. We're gonna start the evening with a prayer.
All right. Father God, we first of all wanted to begin with a prayer of thanksgiving for such a wonderful weekend, such wonderful weather for the festival for Canal Days, Lord, for the spirit of cooperation and community that just flooded the place. All the spectators, participators, the vendors, the parade, Lord, it just was a great weekend to show off our pride in our city and our community. Lord, we pray tonight blessings over this council as these men and women give up their time and energy to help lead our community. We pray your wisdom and your guidance this evening and that, Lord, you just continue to bless our community. In Jesus' name we pray. And all in agreement, say amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America and to the republic for which its fans, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, can you go ahead and call the roll?
Sure will. Steve Sora.
Here.
Mike Gammick.
Here.
Debbie McGinley.
Here.
Jim McLean.
Here.
And Jeff Martis is here.
And has everybody looked at the minutes from last meeting?
Yes.
Make a motion, make up the minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the claims?
Make a motion, make accept the claims.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And financials?
I'll make a motion, make accept the financials.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna start tonight with a public hearing, the 2024 budget. Mr. Beaver.
Thank you. Yes, as required, we put this public budget on notice gateway on September the first. And then even though it's no longer required to put in newspaper, we did publish it in newspaper. Pladium ran it on September the eighth. And let me add some highlights to this before anybody maybe from the public wants to comment on the budget. One of the most important things is the tax levy. And the tax levy, that is what of course is agreed to be collected on real estate taxes. And this year's is 880,796 as shown on the form four that was published. And that is an increase from 864,641. So in this days of hyperinflation, I was happy that we kept this at 1.7% of the tax levy of what would be going out to taxpayers. And this ends up being about a 2.8% per thousand. So our tax rate would go from 1.627 to 1.655. So for example, if someone had $100,000 property, this would mean they would pay only $2.80 more in taxes. So I think we've been real happy to keep those increases very level. And the general fund only went up 2%, one vehicle highway went up 1%, and overall, this is just a 1.7% increase. Again, overall, in pure dollars, the overall budget only went up $38,698. And this was in spite of the fact that we gave a 3% raise across the board, a little extra to our good police chief, Richard. We even added the fifth police officer without using any of the ARP money. I know that was the one that we were trying to, maybe just have half go through the general budget and use half from the ARP money. Be able to configure this in such a way that we could get it all into the normal budget and not use any of the ARP money for that fifth officer. Let's see. And in spite of all this, we still have an operating balance in the general fund of $60,739, which is money that's not budgeted to anything but is there in case of emergencies in addition to your rainy day fund. So I'm very pleased with what Sher and I were able to get accomplished with the budget. State was happy, well, no, after it's actually approved, but at least the workshop rep was very pleased with our work. And with that, I would open it up to anybody in the public that they had comments about the public's published budget.
No comments? Not bad? So we need to make a motion to approve this?
Nope, this is just public hearing. The approval comes at your next month's meeting.
Last chance for anybody. All right, we'll move on.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Bob. Sher. Our first guest is Robert Miller for a follow-up on drawings for property. He's interested in purchasing.
Yeah. Two properties that are vacant.
This is the residential I mentioned about which was North College that has never been extended and has not been abandoned. And there is a small survey that is really goes on with that. That's the property that I would be interested in splitting, just the North College Street. Interested in splitting with my neighbors.
So right now, the road comes to North College and cuts over to Third, right? It doesn't extend on from there?
It does not extend south.
So what you're looking for is that extended part?
Yes.
Just put it with the neighbors?
Yep. And it extends beyond, extends beyond me and my property line as well. It comes all the way down to Whitewater Drive that there'd be neighbors that I wouldn't be involved with, but they would gain some additional land.
I see. And that North College Street, do we have an easement for that for the future to go all the way to Whitewater? And would we still have that like it shows on the map?
I think we did it one time, so I remember Dave being sure about that.
I didn't know if anybody was interested in taking that over because I don't think we're gonna be putting that street in anytime soon. Hasn't been there in fifty years either, too.
I mean, that's what it's getting. See, and that's what he's looking at is basically it's the easement that runs.
Okay, so that is it? Is that easement that runs all the way down to Whitewater is what he's looking for?
Yeah, that runs from Third Street down to Whitewater.
Okay. And what about the second street that comes across through there? Looks like there's an easement for that as well.
I believe that's been abandoned. If, if on the survey, and I did, I gave out my copy, but on the survey itself, I believe that's already been allotted to the neighborhood.
There's like three lots. Okay.
So according to this drawing, Second Street's already been vacated?
Yeah, vacated.
So right now, this is over the street.
It's here, right here.
But that's all. This is just, nothing there. This is all the way. This is his property. This, this right here is actually already. Yeah, that's what it looks like. Is this usable street here? This, this is all the way to here, but it's planted all the way down. It's plotted all the way down to Whitewater. So basically, he's wanting here to there. Yeah. So, yeah, we'll have. He owns down to the second street. So you got people's property here, here, here. Well, Whitewater. So that's Second Street. Okay, that's it. It goes, yeah, goes further down. Downtown here. Okay. I was thinking this was a playground. Some of the his property and then the one on the other side. We'll blow them down too.
We probably maintain it.
I'm taking his, look like he stops and makes a decision. Uh, no, he said multiple. There would be multiple Second Streets up to, on the colored photos.
Go into downtown there and then you'll see that, like Tammy Christie's here. You'll see that where their house is, it's a house. And it goes, it used to have all those trees and they just cut them out.
Robert, did you talk to any of the other property owners?
I talked, I just talked to my neighbor, my one neighbor and.
Across the street or across the?
Across what would be the, the college street if there wasn't, yeah. Regina, I talked to her and they were interested in it, obviously, but I don't know anybody else. Haven't talked, haven't spoken to anybody else. But I can, if that would be something would help.
So comments, Bob?
Well, if he wants to, down to where the vacated Second Street is, he could be the petitioner. If you want to go below that or south of that, you'd really need, he has no vested interest beyond that of vacated Second Street. So you'd need to get other people to join in that petition. But he could, and I could prepare it for the petition to vacate that portion of North College Street. And then we'd, we'd have to find out the property owners and show that it would vest that other half, the other side of it would vest in them. But I mean, it depends on what council wants to do. If you want to go below that, go further south, we just need to talk, looks like a bird shows one half of it and see if they want to join the petition. Or we could just stop at vacated Second Street. Or you could say you have no interest in it and tell him it's not worth doing the petition, so.
So who's gonna contact these people? Is he gonna contact them or Ken or?
Oh, if, if, well, I think given direction, are you interested? A, are you interested in what he's wanting? And B, are you interested in going further south to then inquire about the other people? I mean, I will, I can notify the other, the property owners that are involved directly in his petition. But I'm not sure I'm comfortable going out and soliciting petition with the other.
So you want to talk to other people?
I can.
Yep. So council's interested in going all the way then?
I think might as well take it all the way down to Whitewater.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to go all the way down to Whitewater.
Okay.
Instead of doing two-thirds of it and then having to do it again in a year.
So do we want to table it till he talks to these folks?
Well, there's nothing for you, there's nothing before you right now. So there's nothing for you to approve. We have to do a petition for vacation and that's what this is leading up to as far as what the parameters of that petition are going to be. And that's why I think you, I'm just inquiring with you, how far do you want that petition to go? And I, if I hear correctly, you think you might as well go all the way to Whitewater Drive, which means getting at least one more person who is immediately adjacent to that to join in that petition. And as soon as you find out, let me know and I can prepare that for you soon.
So get in touch with Bob and let him know.
I can do that.
All right.
He's got enough of them too.
This is the commercial property. Off of, I don't know what street, I guess Green Street would be the closest. And there is a survey of my property that is to what is, has a factory building and that's to the east of the town.
It's a weird piece of property.
Yeah, it's. And that's just a survey. Because that one through there, that's the real cut.
Right.
That's right across from my house. And this is, and that's owned by the city as well.
This was warehouse, big warehouse.
One of the, the survey that we found. This is all by trustees of the town. And this little part, this little triangle is also the trustees of the town. This, this is right around, this is down by forty. And it's all cut up.
Yeah, it is.
The little, on the colored photo, you'll see there's also a little parallelogram or, I'm not sure, it's not parallelogram, but a little triangle slice. That's also owned by the town as well. That cuts in the backside of the Fortman's, old Paul Casskey company.
So did you have any major plans for that, Ken, that property?
Because you haven't done anything yet.
No, we've not done nothing with that. I mean, for years, there's nothing ever been done.
There's not even access to that property.
Hell, there is now.
I mean, it's, it's one of those places that get enough rain and it's wet back in there.
Now, this is gonna be a little bit different procedure. The other is a vacate of a planted but unimproved street, which would not really be a cost. This is gonna be your decision to abandon a piece of property, offer it for sale. And you have to offer that to the public at large, even though you can have some preferential treatment to enjoy the property owners. But it's two different procedures.
Same thing we did with the water tower property.
And you're interested in buying the property?
Yes.
Yes. And that one may require a separate survey to have actually surveyed out because I'm not sure, is this a survey of exactly what?
No, that's just a survey of the, it's my property that's adjacent to this, yeah.
And what we've done on some of the others is part of their purchase price would be for the cost of that survey. And that is something you could take action tonight for motion and approval of decision to abandon that property, offer for sale, and instruct me to do the necessary paperwork to offer that.
So I don't wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion. We abandon the property. That's on Walnut, is it?
No, Green.
That's a question.
Yeah, it's kinda weird.
It's not, it has no boundary.
Not anything.
It's green at all.
It's behind Green Street.
Yeah.
So anyway, I'll make the motion, we'd be in this property.
I'll second that.
And instruct Bob to give this thing to us.
All in favor?
Aye.
So Bob, you're on.
I'm on it.
Mr. Miller, is that all you have?
Yeah, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next up is projects for Cambridge City, presentation of the Health Strategic Plan. Mr. Plaster.
Thank you for giving us some time. Beth, if you could distribute those, please. Sheri, Beth has sent you the full document. It's about fifty pages that.
Oh, I didn't get that one. No.
You didn't get it?
I got this.
Okay. We'll, we'll get you the entire document. And then you can distribute it to everybody that would like to see it. But we're gonna focus primarily on the Cambridge City projects for tonight. Along with us in addition to Beth, we have three of the four committee chairs. Sheri Harland, we have the chair of the Health and Romance Committee, the Cassia St. John, the Digital Inclusion. Mary Walker was the head of the Quality of Place. Thank you. And then Melissa Vance was also a member of the core team. So they're all here. If they, if you have any questions that I can't answer, they would certainly be able to do that and talk for a minute or two about the projects that were put forward by their committees that were then refined by the core team. So this has changed dramatically over the last, let me back up just a hair. Two years ago, I came to, and we were, we, the county was interested in participating in the Hoosier Enduring Legacy Program. A project that was funded by Oprah. They put a million dollars into any group that would form and participate in the help process. We went to every community in Wayne County and offered to allow them to participate with us. Richmond was the first one onboard as we came to the other meetings. You all joined with us. I might say you all are probably old enough to remember the movie True Grit. Do you remember that? Well, the, the girl in that, in that movie was accused of, of drawing their attorney, Jay Noble Daggett, like a gun. And so two years ago, you drew your attorney, Jay Noble Beaver. He beat me up with a lot of questions, but that led to actually develop a, a letter, an agreement that all of the towns that are participating signed off on. So thank you for that.
Happy to do it.
You smiled a lot while you were. But you all, Dublin, Milton, East Germantown, Economy and Spring Grove, along with Richmond and the county, signed on to participate. We started this year, just in January, because we were selected to, to be the third cohort. Steve and Jim have been working with us for several months. As we've gone through the process of, of community engagement, you'll recall we met at the school and we had sixty or seventy people there that, that shared their input on what they would like to see some of these dollars, these ARPA dollars, American Rescue Plan dollars spent on. We took all of that into consideration. There were literally hundreds of ideas that people proposed. Those ideas all went to the four committees. The committees working with four universities, Purdue, Allstate, IU and IG Tech, refined those ideas and prioritized those ideas. That then went to the core team, which Steve served on. And we, we refined those into projects that could be prioritized and quantified. All of this, as you recall, we told you from the very beginning, and I was questioned on that extensively, that we would never ask you to put any of your money in outside of Cambridge City. And that is the fact. That's what you'll see here in a minute. On the other hand, the county and the state were able to put money into projects within the towns. And so we have done that. So the county is, just approved last week, last Wednesday, to invest $5.9 billion from the American Rescue Plan into these projects. Not all into the Cambridge City projects. We also are, have proposed investments for the $1 million of Community Development Block grants. And you are the recipient of $450,000 of that 1 million. And so what I want to go over today with you is on the spreadsheet, and you also have the projects listed in your handout that are specifically for Cambridge City. So you have a spreadsheet, I believe. And so on, on the, the front page, down towards the bottom, the next to the last, is Cambridge City. Remember that you all and all of the communities agreed to commit at least 30% of your American Rescue Plan dollars to this process, to implementation of the plan once it's, once it's approved. You had in total $396,596 in American Rescue Plan money. Your 30% commitment equals $118,978. And so we started out working through that list. And you'll recall, because most of you were at that, that meeting at the, at the high school, there were several ideas that were generated. But it's been boiled down to these two ideas that are being proposed to be funded. The Kreitz Park Gathering Space or Performance Venue. Total project cost of $650,000, which would include, as we go, follow that, that line over to the right, $119,000 of Cambridge City's ARPA money. $450,000 of the Community Development Block Grant. $25,000 from Sugar Creek Packing Company. And $5,000 from the Wayne County Tourism Bureau. That would leave about $51,000 that we would need to add to that to, to total the full $650,000. Now, that $650,000 is based on the estimate that, that your architect or, or engineer, whoever it was, put together for that project. So when you get to the point where you actually have the plans ready to go, it may well be more than $650,000. I suppose it could be less and, and you certainly have the opportunity to do some value engineering. But that $650,000 comprised in those line items that we just talked about are what are allocated. That $51,000 that is, is yet to be raised started out significantly higher than that. And you all said you could raise, I forget the number now, but it was significantly above that. And so we've been able to chisel away at that with contributions from, from other folks and, and we're at $51,000. Now, I don't know how much money you have left in your, in your ARPA accounts, but obviously you started with $396,000 and you've committed $119,000 roughly. So if you have any of that money left over, that could be, that could make up the difference if you want to complete the entire project at one time. The other thing I talked to Jim McLean about is there is a mural project that is proposed for the county, but the county is funding with $75,000. The Tourism Bureau is funding with another $20,000. And we're gonna raise a little bit more than that, about another $20,000 to do 11 murals across the county. You have a, in your plan for, for that performance venue, a mural on the side of the fire department. So certainly that could be a viable application to be a part of that countywide mural project. And you could deduct $10,000 from the cost of, of that plan. So that is an opportunity. The second project that's listed on here is the new inclusive playground. You'll recall that we've talked from, from very early on about each of the communities participating in a program called Creating Places. That is a program. That is a program of the Indiana Housing and Community Development Authority, which requires some fundraising, and then if you're successful in that fundraising, IHCPA would match dollar for dollar, up to fifty thousand dollars for, for this project. So Jim, I think, has, has led the way on designing that project, and so I, I don't know how much you've shared with everybody about the details there, but the idea is that we at the county will help you raise that fifty thousand dollars, which would be matched by fifty thousand from IHCPA. So you've got a hundred thousand dollars that you can invest in this project for a new playground. Now, there's some wrinkles with that project. Number one is, that playground is currently in a floodplain, and so to be able to participate, you have to get permission from DNR that you can, you can do this project in that floodplain, and it won't be negatively impacted. So I think you've already had some of those conversations, Jim, so that looks like that's something that's doable.
Yeah, it sounds that way. It sounds like it's something that we can get through.
So if not, there's still time to move that project on to another, another location or come up with another project. I will tell you that we have been very diligently working with, with both public and private sector parties to raise that fifty thousand dollars. Right now, we have about thirty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars committed to your project. So we continue to work on that. Hopefully, we'll get very close, if not all the way to fifty thousand. You still will have to do a fundraising campaign and, and set the goal, but we're, we're doing everything we can to make that goal very reachable for Cambridge City, so that you can do this project. Couple other things that I want to point out to you that are listed under Wayne County Projects that, that you will also be able to participate in. One of those is a project for blight elimination. That project is funded with, with the EDC in partnership with the EDC to the tune of about seven hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're going to set up a, a program where groups in the county that have buildings that, that need to come down because they're safety hazard or they're, they're blighted properties, we will have a structure for you to apply for funding from that, that pot of money, and it'll be open to the entire county. Another thing is Main Street Revitalization. This is specifically a million dollars that the county has committed for, from our American Rescue Plan dollars. We're still working on formulating that, that program to determine the rules and, and process for, for funds, but basically it's for building owners on the main streets of the, of the six towns of the city of Richmond that are actively working with the help program. And so we have a million dollars that will be open to any of those seven entities. The city of Richmond also has committed a million dollars that would just be available to folks on Main Street in the city of Richmond. But we'll be coming out shortly, now that, now that the county has approved the plan, we'll be coming out with the guidelines on how that works. We already talked about the murals project. The other thing that I want to note for you is the Community Development Block Grant. Again, you'll be receiving four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that. Typically, it, it absolutely is required that you have a grant administrator. Typically, that's paid out of the grant, but in this instance, and usually that's about eight to ten percent of the, of the grant. In this case, the county has agreed to pay those expenses, so we have hired Klein Peter and Associates, who will, who is a, a registered grant administrator. They have a, a company that a lot of, a lot of communities in eastern Indiana work with. And so Mike is, is on the case. He's already talked to your, to your architect on that project, and he'll be working with you, and the county will pick up the entire expense of, of that grant administration. So the full four hundred and fifty thousand dollars will be available to go towards the project, construction project itself.
That's great.
Want to remind you that there are some timelines here that we have to pay very careful attention to, both with the CDVG money, but also with the ARPA money. So we have to get a, a grant application in for you all by the middle of January of 2024, and, and then we have a little over a year for the construction to take place. So Mike will, will be pounding that into, he's, he's kind of my Jay Noble Daggett, my Bob Beaver, so I'm going to pull him like a gun every time he does that. But we need to make sure we follow those timelines. And this is, you've got the letter.
Yeah. Got the letter.
We already got the letter.
Okay. So that needs to be signed tonight, if at all possible, if you all agree. We also need for you to agree to commit to the, the help plan and to follow through with the projects that, that we've just discussed, and your commitment of a minimum of a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars.
And that comes from the ARPA money?
The ARPA money, correct.
Are we, by approving tonight, also committing to raising that fifty-one and twenty-five thousand dollars, right?
Uh, no, because you can value engineer that project. You know, if you spend nothing more than the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we, we took that into account as we, as we put the, the program together. So if you're not able to commit additional resources, whether it's public or private, and you choose to go back to the, the level of the funding that's already committed, you can do that. You just need to make sure that you're actually going to spend that amount of money, because we don't want to leave money on the table.
But would that require scaling back the project?
It would require scaling back the project.
We're committing to the project, and right now, the project's estimated to be XYZ, but if we can't raise that, then we still have to do the project, we still have that much money.
You see what I mean? Come on, Bob. He tried to give you four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I couldn't do that. Devil's in the detail.
The devil is in the details.
That's True Grit right there.
And I don't know why he's always standing behind you when that happens. Figure this out.
You're the one dumb enough to put your back down.
I know. Thank you. He always has his back down.
Yes, Bob, we haven't, we haven't gone through, you know, the, the final details, really. This is all just estimated costs at this point, really, on, on everything, so.
So as you, as you work through it, you know, we need to, I'm sure you'll be able to spend the four hundred and fifty thousand, but if you, if you need to cut some things out so that, you know, it doesn't cost a million dollars, you can do that. The, the plan is to get as much as you can. And initially, this was phased, so it was in two, it was in two projects. It was Phase One, which we were going to fund with, with the CDVG money and some input from the county, and then Phase Two, which would be for the future. And it looks like we're real close to being able to do the whole project all at once. And I'll, I'll tell you briefly that in the last two or three weeks, some of the projects that were slated to be paid for with CDVG funding were found to not be eligible for one reason or another, and so we moved more money of the CDVG money into your project and the project in Dublin, and we took some of the county ARPA dollars and steered those to other projects that were not eligible for CDVG funding. So we've, we've rearranged. You all actually ended up a winner in that, in those, in those changes, with more money available to you, but we tried to, we tried to balance everything out as best we could by moving the available dollars around, and we've, we've done that. I think this is a, is a great opportunity for you. It's a, it's a great project. In fact, the, the Tourism Bureau decided to, to participate because of the strength of this project. Sugar Creek Packing decided to participate in this project because they think it's a strong project for, you know, community growth element. So it's, it's, we're excited about these projects.
So are all of the dollars here, listed here, are they all committed other than the fifty-one thousand dollars?
Yes.
So we have all but this, only the four hundred and fifty thousand we need to spend. It's five hundred and ninety-nine thousand that we have to spend.
That is true.
So we're, we're, that's over ninety percent of the way there, you know, so. Jeff, you said no, you say it's all committed, however, but then the grant, the four fifty, the application is due in January, but I think application, I think, hadn't been approved yet, so.
No, and that's not correct. So it's unusual, it's unusual for, for OKRA to be in this position, but when they, when they do certain projects, they award money. You still have to apply, but it's not a competitive application.
So it's going to be pre-approved?
As long as you, it's pre-approved right now. They've already looked at it. In fact, that's why we had to shift some money around, because a couple of the projects that we were going to direct these dollars to were ineligible for one reason or another. This one continues to be eligible, and so we moved more money into this project and the one in Dublin, which are, which were both deemed by OKRA to be eligible.
Great, so it's just a paper act of thought of it, then?
Correct, correct.
Jeff, we left off the Wi-Fi extension.
Correct. We also, as, as we gather together these projects and the parks, and yours in particular, but there are, there are others in Economy, and there's one in Dublin, and one in East Germantown, one in Milton. Those parks, we will pay to put Wi-Fi infrastructure into the parks if you all decide that you want it and you're willing to, to pay the, the operating cost going forward. So we have money for the infrastructure, but, but not for the, you know.
Annual budget.
The monthly cost. And, you know, how much that is, it's going to depend on what kind of speed it's you, you want to put there and that kind of thing. But what are we, what are we calculating the cost would be on a monthly basis when they?
Um, so whatever you pay currently for your monthly, it'd be just that additional, but it's definitely something that, so maybe, maybe around a thousand-ish a year.
A year.
But thinking if you have an outdoor venue and the technology that that takes, you're going to want that, and so this pays for the, this pays for the infrastructure cost of all of that, and it expands from the main street, main street this way into your park and into your venue.
And Acacia, who would be the provider?
It's, you're saying provider, Realism Property Company, yeah. So they've already quoted all of it and given us all the costs, and so that the cost that's associated is the cost that we, the county would pick up.
And that project is approved for the county to pay for the infrastructure if you opt in and agree that you're going to pay for that monthly service fee. Anything else you all want to add? Sherry?
The mobile transit for the Family Resource Center.
That's right. So we have a, a group called the Family Resource Center, which is, is establishing a location in Richmond. We are funding that through ARPA dollars, and the county is going to help them acquire a van so that they can bring their programming out into the county. They work with families who have been split up, that have challenges, that maybe, maybe one of the parents was incarcerated or has drug addiction, and, and they try to keep those families together, and they work with council to, to try to help keep the families together, and that, that programming will, will be able to be brought out to the county through the use of this vehicle that the county's providing to them. Anything else? Melissa?
Nothing else to add from a project standpoint, but I just want to commend council for their participation in this project and this long, arduous timeline that we have been dealt with, you know, the application of the help grant that gave us that extra million dollars, but then to going through the process that OKRA required for that. But hopefully, hopefully now, we begin to see the fruits of, of all of that, and it pays off, and not every community in Wayne County chose to be a part of this, and it's, it's sad that, that they're not able to reap the benefits beyond what they, they had to invest, but between Steve's ongoing participation, Jim's participation, and the others of you that have shown up at times when it warranted more, to be able to see these things come to fruition, I just think it's really admirable, and hopefully the residents of Cambridge City see that as well. So congratulations.
Thank you.
I will say, every meeting that I attended, everybody made it a focus to include the cities that participated, and it was, it was very good to see, and obviously, it, it has paid off for Cambridge City up here, so.
And I thank all of you for that as well.
Well, that was the, that was the whole purpose of working together to begin with. We're interested in making Wayne County better. You're interested in making Cambridge City better. Cambridge City is an integral part of Wayne County, and so working together, we can do some things that we can't do individually, so there's some synergy to be gained, and as Melissa said, and I wish every community had, had chosen to participate, but we wanted to work with the folks who, who agreed to participate, and, and I think there's, there's some real positive benefit here. We, we took very seriously the input from, from the communities as they all participated in, in the surveys and, and the meetings. We looked at that very carefully and tried to do the things that were a part of your master plan, for example, and focused on those. IU Bloomington looked at all of the planning that we've done in the last five years and pulled out the pieces of those plans, whether it was Cambridge's master plan, or the city of Richmond's, or the Richmond Parks Department, or we have a, a housing plan that, that we've been working on collaboratively for four years now. So all of those things, along with the public comments, went into the mix of determining what needed to be funded now, and, and this is where we're at. So again, the county, both the commissioners and the council approved the, it's called a strategic investment plan. We need each of the communities to, to agree to support that, and it can, it can be as simple as approval in your minutes that, that you agree to participate and accept the strategic investment plan on behalf of Cambridge City, but we need that commitment for the money to flow. And then we also need that, your signature, isn't it, document?
Which I think would be a separate vote, which is just.
Correct.
So.
Right. And again, we're, we pay for Klein Peter and Associates to, to do all of that for you. So unless you have questions for us, thank you very much for listening to us tonight, but mostly thank you for participating over the last two years, and we hope to really accomplish some good things working together.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So you know.
Thank you.
Five, more who's a town attorney is on two free communities that said yes.
Okay. Good.
Bob, do you have a motion?
Nobody said yes yet, except for the county.
For approval to, of this strategic investment plan?
Yes, I would do the vote.
So do you have anything else, Bob?
No.
I think he made a fine.
Look, Steve, just drew him like a gun. Last time.
So council, that was a lot to digest. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll make the motion that we approve the strategic investment plan just outlined.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then a second vote would be to approve this letter to Mr. Slider, whose Division of the Stone Preservation and Archaeology authorizing Mike Klein Peter, who's a consultant to act on your behalf, and to allow Steve to sign this letter.
I'll make that motion.
No second.
Approve the.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Appreciate it. We need to head to East Jerkington Town now, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Try not to get hung up in the traffic.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
And you get that document back tomorrow?
Yes, I'll send it to you, yes, I sure will. Cool, let's get started. Alright.
Jason Dubu with Co Alliance Co-op for Gas.
Aye, go see her.
Annie from Wes.
So I'm just gonna give a quick project update first on, on the waterworks improvement project. So first phase, phase one A that's been going on for a while now is the in-town water mains. And construction for that is pretty much all completed. Cooley will come back to do some seeding touch-up work in the spring if that's needed, if some of the grass isn't growing quite nicely. And for tonight, I have a couple documents for approval. One is the final pay application, pay application number nine, and then the other is a release of retainage form. And the retainage will actually be released once the record drawings that Cooley provided us are approved. Wes is still reviewing them, there's gonna be a little bit of updates with that, but we're gonna go ahead and approve pay application nine, Steve signature and sign the release of retainage form and get that to OKRA so that we can stay with their timeline. But then we'll hold off on sending it to SRF and actually releasing the funds to Cooley until the record drawings are approved. So I have those two documents with me tonight. And then the second phase of the project, phase one B, is improvements at the industrial park water treatment plant and also the, a little bit of improvements at the in-town water treatment plant. And this project is currently in progress, construction is in progress. And substantial completion for that project is in January. Cooley recently submitted a time extension request, which is something that we like to discuss with you. Maybe if there's a little bit of time after the meeting, just to get that on your radar. But for that project, the work completed so far is they're working, they drilled the new well at the industrial park. If you've driven out past there, they've started to work on the actual wellhouse building. They've done the foundation, the footers, and they're working on the actual walls. They've done a lot of the electrical work at the industrial park, laying the conduit and then some cleaning and videoing of the in-town wells. And some work, some of the major items left to be completed on that project are finishing the wellhouse number three at the industrial park, rebuilding the aerator at the industrial park and replacing the filter media out there, adding a third high-service pump at the industrial park water treatment plant and then a lot of the electrical and skater work at both the in-town water treatment plant and the industrial park water treatment plant. And for that tonight, I have a pay application for that to be approved as well. And then the next phase of the project is phase two, which hasn't really gotten started yet, but that is for the water tower and water main extensions out at the industrial park. And I think Bob is working with Adam and Marty to coordinate some.
I just sent an email to him right before the meeting. About that and we can't actually have Steve sign that tonight with the initialing those two things. And what you may recall, you approved this subject of my adjustments and the, only two adjustments was one, that invoices would be quarterly instead of monthly and that most importantly, if you terminate for cause, that you will pay all services performed to date, but not any termination or suspension expenses. Because if you remember, this is, it's dependent on, we don't have the funding yet. And so if that's the reason for it, we just didn't wanna have to pay extra fees or expenses we pay for work done to date, but nothing else. So with that, with the initialing, I think Steve can go ahead and sign this.
Yeah, yeah, like Bob said, we're working on securing funding for that. And at our, our meeting last week, yeah, last week, we talked a little bit about this group called the Environmental Infrastructure Working Group, which is just kind of a group of a bunch of different funding agencies and they'll put on a meeting where all these funding agencies come together and, and work with representatives from the town to kind of explain the project and talk with them about which agencies can contribute funding. So if you guys are interested in working with this group, you can set up a meeting just to talk with them about different funding mechanisms and how, how to get that, it's, it's super easy, it's just one form and then like a virtual meeting will be set up with them to do that. And then other than that, there's some future phases that haven't been started yet, but were talked about in the PER, the study that we did last year. And those are just some more water treatment plant improvements at the town and then the last phase would be a new water treatment plant at the industrial park. But does anybody have any questions about the projects with these documents out?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yeah.
So are there any building permits on these projects out there? The building and.
I, I think there's for the wellhouse.
Are you inspecting it? Cause it would come through the county and we don't have anything.
Okay, I'll make.
I make the exception that sewer plants and towers come under that's not normally occupied.
Is it an office space or?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a.
Okay. We inspected the last one, that's kinda odd.
It's just the wellhouse where the, where the wells at.
Alright, probably don't need one. You had the last one inspected, I thought. Thanks Jeff. You inspected it, right? So you just need me to sign some?
Probably needs a motion.
Yeah. I'll accept the motion on that, I won't be signing this.
Yes, we still need a signature on that, but we won't send it to SRF yet, to actually take it. And I think this is the form that you usually sign. So there's, that's the, this first hand form.
You're okay with?
Oh yeah, those are just two copies. I was just doing a walk.
This was what you approved last week. And then saying that we're dead initially, this is here.
Okay. So I need a motion for, I don't even know. What about these documents?
For the pay applications.
So someone wanna make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept and pay, pay application number nine for phase one A and pay application number two, number one, one B.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need to initial. Did you initial?
I did, yes.
So you want me to send the application two to SRF?
About this first man form?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll have him sign that application two. And I'll have him sign this and then I'll send it to the form to SRF if you want.
Okay.
Well, this is the same one, but this might be the one I send. I'll be the Klein Peter and.
Is that all you have?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on to unfinished business, updates on all the blighted properties. Five oh two East Main, four eleven and four fifteen West Front and five oh one and five oh three Church Street and three oh eight West Maple, and are you folks here to talk about a couple of those or?
Four.
Four, four eleven and four fifteen.
Yeah, four eleven, four fifteen, yeah. Front Street.
So floor is yours.
Well, it's just, we live right next door and they, the house right next door is four eleven and I know for sure it's been abandoned. Four fifteen. Four fifteen, no, yeah, yeah. Abandoned for at least ten years.
That's the one at Burke, right?
Right.
And you've been here before on that?
Yeah.
Yes.
We've been to two tax sales to, to try to purchase them on tax sales and get, yeah, it's the same story. You get outbid by a big corporation. You know, they end up coming, coming back and paying their taxes and nothing is done with the property. So it just continues to get worse and worse every year. We have problems with groundhogs.
In our own yard also.
I mean, in, in the whole, I mean, I walk, walk regularly within the whole block or more. I can count seven groundhogs in one walk per evening. There are raccoons that live in and out of, out of the house. I took pictures and I counted a minimum of seven holes in the roof and the roof structure around the building. So you think about, you know, just the rodents and what kinda damage they're doing. We try to take care of our yard and treat our yard and we live right next to Bruce who owns the greenhouse. He does his yard as well and you think about cleaning mosquitoes and grubs and everything and they, they mowed last night. I, it wasn't them.
Just front yard.
It wasn't the owners of, I don't know if you guys paid for somebody to mow the yard.
Did you send him a letter?
Yeah.
Darlene Robertson, Roberts out of. Yeah, Everton.
And that's, that's whose name is on, is the owner.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
We've approached her a couple of times to try to purchase it in two months.
She says thirty grand. All wiring is new in that house, you can look at and see that the wiring.
And I'm in the process of drafting a letter to her. You know, really, looking at it structurally, I can't say it's unsafe, but there are things that need to be taken care of to keep it from getting to that.
If it does have holes in the roof though, you could go after them for unsafe.
But in first offer to fix.
Yeah, it's to fix.
Gives them an opportunity to fix the problem.
Yeah, so that's what I'm working on, the letter for that piece of property to, for, for her.
You can see through the roof from my, our house facing east, you can see through the whole house from one side to the other. You can even see the house on the other side of the alley, the white siding on it through where, on our side of the house.
Yeah.
It had, they haven't done anything. They barely mowed the yard. I know you got, the town had some people mow it a couple of times, but if you had town mow, have somebody mow it last night, they didn't do the backyard. Other people don't do the backyard anyway, so it's, it's becoming a nuisance.
Can they receive the letter about the weeds?
Yes, and like I said earlier, the spring when I sent it, the letter came back to me. But then they did go in and mow. But like, but, and this is something else I've done, you know, it's like a lot, they go and mow the yard, but they leave the weeds up next to the house, they don't take care of that. So I have revised my weed letter or letter that I sent on yards. That says, basically what it says that, it doesn't mean just mowing the grass. This also means chopping the weeds down, any trees that are starting to sprout up against the house because, you know, it's just from seedlings that, you know, things are left.
They even got a tree growing inside the house on four eleven next to the alley.
All part of what, you know, what they get a weed letter, that's all included in the letter.
And just mowing the front yard can't be good enough.
But I'll go take a look at yard wise and everything and I'll probably include a. But send a weed letter with the letter I sent on houses.
So on your letters, like my letters I sent, I give them like sixty days to make the repair and then I file unsafe on, is that what you do, like, what's your timeframe?
The ones, the one I did do down on Fourth Street, they, I gave her thirty days. And that, and the one I gave on here by the liquor store, I'm in conversation with her. She's working on getting something done with it. I'm trying to get back, she left me a phone number, she has some questions and her work schedule is sort of bouncing around, so trying to get back ahold of her to answer her questions.
I think it's supposed to be ten days.
That, not on an unsafe building.
No.
On, on, on weeds, yeah, that, that, that has ten days.
Well, what is our timeframe? Thirty, sixty or?
On the unsafe building, I, I'm not sure.
There is an actual time.
There should be like ten days for a letter. It should be written, they should have to go for a letter within ten days, have ten days of how they're gonna direct it. They want time to do it.
Yeah, I give them thirty days because they've been here before, this is drug on too long.
Yeah, they're not, they don't even, they're not even doing a thing for it.
And I, I had, she had called me last year when I sent her a weed on the grass and, you know, it was, well, I wanna do something to the houses to get them fixed up to sell them. Well, she's not, she's not doing that and so it's.
I do know what she's doing, she's calling people up, having them put in a shower stall when the, the house looks like that name show up.
Just enter the whole window if you wanna take it down. Trees growing out of the house next to the one that's fixed up, right?
Yes, four eleven. And there's vines on the backside of it and on the backside of the four fifteen and the side of the alley of four fifteen. So it's, it's not just one little, it's the whole, both houses.
Yeah, those properties are not in good shape at all. I was like, why they're just yesterday or day before and looking at it, it's like, it's bad. And the one's kinda fixed up down there now, the green one with the porch.
Yeah, the old Bennington house, they, they've really fixed it up. But they, they got groundhogs going underneath their front porch from.
Yeah. So you'll send the letter and get this thing going. And then what about the other ones, the front street or the five oh one East Church? Five oh one and five oh three East Church and three oh eight West Maple.
Okay, the one there on Church Street, that five oh one and that, that I sent them a letter on the stuff that he had out there in the alley, he had cleaned that up. And they did get rid of a couple cars that was at the next place. And so, but they, he got them, sending him a letter to get rid, he's got some trash there where he needs to get rid of. And then the house there on Main Street, five oh two East, they are starting to clean up that again. And in the letter I sent them, I told them, you know, I'm not, no, you know, I gave her a date that it's supposed to be done and if it's not done by that date, she'll get, she'll be getting another letter with a fine attached to it.
And then the three oh eight West Maple.
It's a trailer.
Oh, she's gotten another letter, so it's, and I think Monday is when her timeframe is up on that.
So he'll send the letter out, what, sixty days, thirty days?
I'll send her, I'll send her a letter out and then she'll have thirty days to respond to it. On what she, you know, I'm gonna tell her what I see needs to be done and she has thirty days to respond to that. Either to fix, take care of those things or respond to the letter.
Now, is this an unsafe building letter or is this just weed?
This, that's an unsafe.
It's gonna be an unsafe building.
Un safe building, what you do, there's two things. One is by law, she has how much time, she can ask for an appeal to this body. You can then choose how much time to give her to make the remediation and if she wants to appeal that timeframe, she can come here for the next council.
Like I've done the other ones, the first letter will be that, you know, they could possibly be considered unsafe and these are things that I see need to be done.
Yeah, and that one doesn't have to necessarily have a timeframe, the next one has to. One, tell her what, by law she has time to respond to. The second timeline element is how much time she has to remediate to repair that and if she differs with that, she has to ask for an appeal.
So would you stay in touch with these folks and keep them posted on what's? So, would you stay in touch with these folks and keep them posted on what's?
I'll let you guys know what I hear from her.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Next is update on the solar eclipse.
It's still coming.
Still, it's gotta be updated.
You won't buy a t-shirt?
Should have brought some.
Actually, we didn't get to have a meeting about the park because number one, I was sick and I had to cancel. Um, so, we do have one scheduled for tomorrow, uh, with Mike and, uh, Richard.
Ken.
Ken, I think Jeff, you can't make it, right? So, we'll discuss and we'll come back to their next meeting with our recommendation.
I still think we stop it from cover. I should stop it from cover. New business, motion to approve three hundred dollars from Cambridge City Main Street to the fire department.
I'll make a motion that we approve three hundred dollars from Cambridge City Main Street to the fire department. But is this a donation, what is it?
It's a donation.
Donation. So, you're accepting that.
We're accepting a donation. Do we have a second on that?
I did.
All in favor?
All right.
And we don't have any boards that need to make a report tonight, I don't believe it.
We have a cemetery meeting September nineteenth at six o'clock. Note the time, it changed.
That's a Tuesday, right?
Amy said the date changed too. She's, she said it was always on Monday.
Yeah, it's always Monday, now it's on Tuesday.
Um, and the park meeting is September twentieth at six o'clock also.
Okay, so Debbie, did we change from Monday to Tuesday or did we just have the wrong date now?
See, that's what I thought, cause I had it, I had it in.
Cause it's always been on Mondays so long as I've been involved with cemetery.
I don't remember why it's the nineteenth, but it's on a Tuesday.
Okay. I, I remember us talking about that.
Yeah, I don't remember why.
What the cause was.
Yeah. Aren't you all right with that?
Oh, yeah, two, I just wanna make sure, cause it is different. So, Tuesday is the correct date.
Tuesday the nineteenth for the cemetery.
At six.
Yeah, and it is at six.
That time was early before.
Seven for the cemetery.
So, it is gonna be six?
Six.
Yes.
We'll move on to staff reports.
Town marshal, uh, he's got a couple of things. First off, I sent you all an email about Larry's retirement. I think everybody got that, so, um, yeah, I didn't put you through that.
So, he is retiring?
He is retiring, yeah, effective Friday actually, the fifteenth. So, I guess, we thank him for all his years of service. He had to, just under twenty-two years, so, that's a long time. The new car is in, um, haven't picked it up yet, but, um, gotta work with Ford on that, on that part of it yet. So, hopefully we get it in a couple of days or maybe next week. Uh, our K nine car was in an accident and it's actually gonna be totaled. Um, still waiting on their, other guy's insurance to send a settlement, I guess. I'm not sure exactly what we're gonna get out of it. I'm hoping around fifteen thousand. The body shop totaled it out at like ninety-five hundred or so and it gets like seventy-five percent of the value. So, if you take that, it should be roughly about fifteen thousand, um, the value of it. So, obviously we're gonna have to replace that.
Other driver was liable?
Yes, yeah.
And he wasn't insured?
Yes. And our driver wasn't hurt, so there's no, no injuries, so, um, need to look at a couple of options maybe on replacing that car. Again, it depends on how much they give us, I guess, but, um, I'm hoping to know that during the next couple of days. At one point we bought a used car, um, that's still an option to buy it to replace it with a used one. Um, I have kinda looked at, um, yeah, Chicago Motors where we bought the last one at. I think you have quite a few vehicles in stock, but I'm not really looking real hard until we know the money we're gonna get. I don't know if there's a way, um, this, this new car's in, the, the dealer's telling me that he's got two extra cars right now that are unspoken for. And they're gonna sell those so that it's first come, first served. If we could figure out a way to take that money and add additional money to it to, to buy a second new one.
Is that Sam?
Yes. And that was earlier, earlier today, so I, hopefully they haven't already got rid of them, but, um, they won't last long, I'm sure. Because like, as everybody knows, we worked this car in November, last November, just not getting it, so, they're way behind. Um, I don't know, we talked, I talked to Sheri a little bit and, and, um, Jim even mentioned that looking at the appropriation that the Dublin contract goes into, there's in excess of a hundred thousand dollars in there right now. That, twenty-five of that is going to the body cameras, uh, the donation we had for that, but, uh, around seventy-five thousand. That money's not being used for anything at the moment, so.
Well, that's not actually true, is it?
It's, it goes into the general.
It goes into the general fund, it's part of our budget.
The general fund, correct.
I track it, yeah.
And so, yeah, I mean, that's part of our miscellaneous revenue and miscellaneous revenue is what we utilize in determining the bottom line of the budget. And so, you can't say, it's not being used for anything. It is being used every year, so it's not in a fund that is just available. We've gone through that before.
Well, we have, but, yeah, we have, we've talked about that, you know, but there's a hundred thousand dollars in there, the way she, the way she tracks it. I guess that's the confusion.
That's the confusion.
Cause I mean, we don't have a fund that has, not at all.
It is an appropriation though, right?
It's an, it's a, it's a appropriation, our line item.
Well, it's a line item of miscellaneous revenue.
Right.
That is used in part to fund the police department and banks. So, um, part of you, we budgeted three hundred eighty thousand dollars for the salaries for budget and so some of that comes from that hundred thousand dollars. Some goes for some of your other line items, and so.
We'll just wait and see what they, what they offers for this and then.
Yeah, and I would not just take it face value. If it's the other guy's insurance company that you're dealing with, they'll, they may try to lowball it. I mean, so, you, if you need to get another opinion as far as what is that car worth? And sometimes that requires some negotiating with them, but I want you to get the full value of what that vehicle was worth, not just what some insurance adjuster tries to pay you from his insurance company.
We'll, we'll see what they come by, I don't think we'll go from there, but.
So, at that point, Bob, do you get involved?
I mean, I have at times for clients that will say, hey, I think they're being shortchanged, so if you need help to negotiate that, but, or you're of course welcome to, to get another opinion of value that somebody can really give, uh, estimated fair market value of that car before the accident. Cause that's what, if it's totaled, that's what you're entitled to, so.
I'm, I'm under the assumption we're gonna be able to take the equipment out of it, we'll be able to reuse the equipment if that's not part of the.
It was not damaged?
No, okay, so, some of the equipment, yeah. Well, that being said, some of that equipment we can reuse if we can buy a car in that, in that, um, year range. It's from twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen, I think, the equipment will transfer directly in there.
How much are you getting on equipment? It's twenty-two thousand. That's for next year's budget. And then you've got, then you'll have nine. I wonder how much the lease payments would be.
I'm not sure yet. That's what I'm trying, waiting on board to get back from them, so. And that lady that takes care of that one on vacation last week, so. That's all I have, Ron.
And old guy with the black crowned dick.
Yeah.
You don't need a bag, do you?
You don't want a bag. Fire chief.
Uh, had a good weekend, now things went well, um, kitchen's successful. I think, never got any complaints yet, nobody's, nobody's sick. Uh, real good weekend, we done walking the kitchen and it's, uh.
New stove worked well for you?
This new stove's working great, nearly worked real well.
I thought it would.
At this point, no problem. At seven twenty.
Is all you have?
That's all I got.
Public works here, yeah.
Only thing I have for you guys is, okay, we've got a situation over at one of Robert's buildings. His fire system leaks. And the valve inside will not shut all the way down and he's wanting to replace it. So, um, so the only, the valve that, I'm not sure, probably to shut valves down, to shut the water main down, would probably shut down the whole south side of the town. And with what they gotta do, would be opening things up, which would then also be putting all of them under a boil water, which I do really don't wanna do. And there's, when the system was put in or the main, there should have been a valve put outside that to be able to shut that down, but there's not. And so, what I got is two diff, two, a price on two different valves. And I'd like to be able to put a valve in there so we could shut it down so he can fix the inside.
How long will it be down for if there's no valve to shut it off?
As in?
To fix.
If I, if I have to shut down south side of town, that's hard to say, you know. Robert can say, well, we'll have it done in an hour, but if you run into something, that hour could turn into a day or, you know.
It's kinda unusual.
But I went down there, looked all over to see if I could find a valve outside with, you know, metal detector, probe poking in the ground where there should be something and I cannot find anything. And so, I'm looking at, you know, the valve that I probably would be putting in is the, the lower cost of the two that are on that slip.
What's the advantage of one over the other can't be though, of the two costs?
Okay. Ideally, to me, the more expensive one is, it's a new valve that is, um, a hundred percent shut down. And it's also made where, like if the, the part that screws down that shuts the water off, if it ever goes bad, that whole piece can just be taken out and a new one put in and that. Um, I've been to a demonstration on that valve and it does completely shut down. Um, the other one that we, that's on there, the, the lower cost one, now that valve there is basically the same valve that they put in, like when they're putting in a water line and they put a valve in. And so, you know, that one there will shut it down too. And that's what I wanted to get, the price on what my options were that I'd get a complete shutdown on. Like the valves that I have them come in and put in, sometimes when we can't shut, get a leak shut down, those don't shut it completely down. That's, those are sort of what they call an inserta valve where they just cut a, they put a thing on the pipe, they cut a hole and they put the thing in there. But if you've got scaly stuff in your pipe, it's not gonna shut it completely down. But both of these valves would shut it down.
Any thoughts, Bob?
When you're, when you put this valve on, you found on and you say you're gonna shut it down, you're just shutting it down to his property or?
Yes.
And nowhere else? So, the valve is for his property alone?
It's for the, the line that feeds his fire service inside. You know, like, as an example, down at Convertel, just off the side of Green Street, you can see a valve tower. And that valve shuts their fire service off.
Just for them?
For just that fire service. And, and all, there should have been something like that put in there, but there wasn't.
Well, who's, who's normally, would that be the responsibility, the property owner or?
That, I have no idea on all that, Bob. On, you know, if it's something that the town would have put in when, you know, that line was put in, I don't know.
But the other businesses in town, like, who did theirs? The town or, we just don't know.
I mean, so is this a fire suppression system then in case of a fire?
Yes.
Building. I mean, most of the time, that's a property owner who's gonna install on new, for new construction. I don't think a town is expected to put in somebody else's fire suppression system.
So, so who's doing the fire suppression system?
I have a, a local gentleman, my name is Eric Triplet. Um, so, we have, as far as I understand, construction, the municipality is responsible for putting any type of shut-off valve off of their main to anybody's property. There's a valve usually so that that property can be separated, isolated.
And that's a thing, there is nothing.
And there is nothing. We have the main valve right inside of our building. That is what is leaking and it's barely, we just cannot get it to close all the way off. And so, we have purchased the valve, the supply chain took us a while, we got it in, we're ready, but we struggled. Ken and I have struggled to try to locate how to shut this off safely with the least amount of impact. I just spoke to him earlier tonight. I did not envision this amount of money and so I, I'm, I don't know how to help, but, you know, I don't.
So, in order for you to make your fix, we just simply need to have the town figure out how to stop the water getting in the roof?
That's all I'm asking.
And it's, that is hard to believe that just in order to put a stop valve, it's gonna cost seventeen thousand dollars. It's unbelievable.
Right.
There's gotta be another way.
I mean, is there not a temporary valve you can put in?
Isn't that what they put a valve in?
But, that would be, be the same, you're still looking at that same kinda money.
To dig the hole.
To, for them.
Around it.
And for them to put just a temporary.
How big a valve, a six inch valve?
I'd get some bids on this, more than just one contractor.
And, and if you put this valve in, won't you still have to shut the water off to that whole end of town to put that valve in? They'll put in one of those temporary stops?
So, put a line stop in that's will shut the flow of the water, put the valve in and then take the line stop out. Where's this water meter at? Inside the building.
The water meters inside the, yeah, there's, so there's nothing.
There's nothing outside to be able to shut that water going into that building off?
I can't imagine you putting in a suppression system that didn't have a shut-off valve. Oh, there's always a valve outside somewhere. There has to be a suppression, if it was put in by a fire suppression company, somewhere there's got to be a valve outside.
But I've, I've not, I've walked around there with a metal detector, probe, trying to see if I can find something metal and I've not found nothing.
Jeff, you kinda have expertise.
That's why I said it's got to be.
Can you go down, can, take a look at it?
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll take a look at it.
Yeah, see if you can figure out something.
I'll go down, uh, Wednesday morning, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, go down Wednesday morning.
I mean, it seems kinda odd to spend seventeen thousand dollars just to shut the water off, so they can put up a valve in.
And never turn it off again.
Never turn it off again forever.
Thirty-five years.
But I mean, it's, cause it's a downtown store, so, if you're gonna shut that off, if they have a pipe break in there, we're gonna flow a lot of water going in, we're gonna flow a lot of water.
Right.
So, what businesses would be out of water if you just shut it off?
I would have, from looking at the map, I would shut the whole south side of Cambridge off.
There's no, there's no sexual shut-off down through there?
Third, fourth.
Third street, fourth street.
Top would go up to church, top farm would go.
It just depends on, you know, cause it's, you start, you start here, you turn this valve and you just, you just have to keep, you fear the water's still getting through somewhere.
He said these guys will live on those.
So, if you'll go down and take a look at that and then let us know, keep us posted on, I mean, when did you wanna do these repairs? When you thought ASAP or?
Yes.
How bad's the leak?
Does it affect your water bill?
Uh, no, it's not enough leak to actually turn the, the, this big of a meter. But it's enough that it's, it's going underneath and washing out, uh, over time. This has been going on for months.
There's going through a meter while he had to be shut off.
Do I wonder if there's?
There's not a valve there.
There's no shut-off valve.
So, they didn't pay their bill, we couldn't shut the water off? I'm just asking.
Then, on, on fire, fire protection, those meters aren't built.
Okay, so it's not running through their city?
It's still, it's not going through their regular meter that they get their water bill on.
That's what I was getting at.
But it's still water going through that's being wasted.
Yeah.
Some of them, when they tie, they tie that meter in, that main line in, the suppression, it had to have a valve, so when they tie that meter, you had to shut the water off.
You had to shut the fire off.
To put it on.
Could be part of the back, a street connection underground. Now, cause I've traced the line. Now, 'cause I've traced the line to the line that it's being fed from.
What do you think, Andy, you're a water expert?
She didn't design it, she's staying out.
Put a pump in the line. Take the pump out faster. What about a can of Flex Seal?
It's rattle working on that delete. Well, I suggested you table this, yeah. Yeah. Fire chief, go down, look at it, and maybe think about getting another estimate too, 'cause it just doesn't seem how it really should stand on, one time shut-off.
And that'd be worth bringing somebody to next rate, pipe before you, you know, so, if you, if you next rate, you see a valve on the pipe, there was a valve somewhere. There's, there's got to be some way to shut that water. I can't imagine, even by putting that fire suppression system in, with no shut-off outside the building.
Yeah, they put the valve in at some point.
Somebody put a valve, that, water had to be shut off, put the valve in.
Then it just got really wet.
Turn it faster.
I was gonna say that line may have been installed.
Capping it all, and all things used to get done.
So is that all you had, Ken?
That's all I had.
Yes, well, most of the month is on the budget, but I'm also happy to report some relatively good news verbally on the stormwater fee with the county. I had told you earlier that the county attorney had, um, accepted and is recommending our one dollar per customer per year as a fee with that. The county auditor has now also done that, and they're putting into place the software in order to do this. The only thing they were negotiating is they wanted some sort of upfront fee for the first year, and whether you look at that as something extra rather than the dollar fee, or it's actually being applied for the year that they did it and didn't get a fee. So at worst, they were talking about fifteen hundred dollars for the first year instead of eight forty, which is like six sixty more. But I'm trying to get that down, um, while they're doing the agreement. But at least, um, we do now have the agreement that they are going to bill our stormwater and do it for the dollar per customer, and it's just getting this initiation fee negotiated.
Right, yeah. Long time coming.
Okay, Mike, did you have anything?
I think I'm good.
Debbie?
No, nothing else.
Sheri?
I don't think so.
Jim?
I'll accept a motion through the jury.
It's adjourned.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.